Good evening, everyone. Happy Wednesday to you and to yours and to your kin, yuns, all yuns. Welcome. It is Wednesday, April the 9th. Are you guys, are your allergies all jacked up? Usually every year, like for about a month in Georgia, I just walk around the box of tissues and nasal sprays. This year, I'm trying to get ahead of it and I'm taking an allergy pill every morning and it seems to be working pretty good. So far, so good. So instead of me letting my body do its normal thing, I am keeping it from doing its normal thing. I'm enjoying my life and willing to deal with the consequences later, I guess. That's how that works. Welcome to Spirit and Truth Sanctuary where the whole household of God is welcomed and wanted. We are once again in Bishop Carlton Pearson's The Gospel of Inclusion. It's not only Inclusion 101, it's a deeper dive into the character of God, the nature of the universe, the study of cosmology. Where did we come from? What are the origins? What is our ontology? What does it mean? What does life mean? Epistemology, how can we know what we know? All of those are just fancy ways of saying, we're talking about a lot of things, a lot of different levels of understanding the nature and character of God, of the universe, of ourselves. Are we like God? Are we fallen? Do we carry Adam's nature or are we more like the second Adam, Jesus who became the Christ? What is our entry point? Is there right or wrong to it or is it just really about what works for us? And then what works, you know, in the consciousness or the collective consciousness, the world consciousness? And so you may be here because you're excited about tonight's talk or discussion. You may be here because you are curious. You're kind of a Nicodemus who's a little bit curious about what does this inclusion mean? You may be kind of in the reconstructing process. I don't believe in the God of my youth that my parents told me, but I'm not ready to let go of some things about Christianity. Maybe that's a good liminal or a good space in the middle in some ways. Or maybe you're just concerned. You're here to pray for me. It's okay too. Wherever I am, I do have the joy of the Lord and I have chosen to carry the cross of service and justice and loving my neighbor as I love myself. And so welcome to a space of love tonight. We're glad you're in the house. All right, we're going to begin with our devotion tonight. We're in our Fully Awake 365 Devotion, Brandon. In a moment, will you get me something? I have pollen all over my glasses and I didn't realize until you turned these lights on.
Do you have your little tool?
I do not have my little cleaning device.
How dare you?
My astronaut cleaning device. So it's not urgent, but when you came.
Since I've joined the glasses club, I have something for you.
Uh oh, you've got a cloth, a cloth of some sort. All right, we are in our Fully Awake 365 Devotion. It's April the 9th. And we're still in the month of transformation. We're going to talk tonight on the subject of the same spirit. Same spirit, what is that? That's hinting us toward the same spirit of what? Same spirit that was in Jesus is now in us. All right, let's grab our affirmation at the very top together. Today or tonight, I will get up, get out and get something. If you can, if anybody can tell me, jump in the chat and tell me what lyric that is, what group that is. If you know the album from that, I would be really impressed. And maybe if I say this, well, you need to get up, get out and get something. Don't let the days of your life pass by. Anybody familiar with that Southern play-istic Cadillac funky music? All right, if those aren't enough clues, you're probably not going to get it by now. But if you know it, jump in the chat and let us know. What lyrics is that? Today, I will get up, get out and get something. I will celebrate resurrection power. The same spirit that resurrected Jesus also resides within me. I may fall, but I will get back up and maybe again. We fall down, but we get up. Yeah, that's a song we sang for years at our church. We don't sing it as often because we don't like to call ourselves sinners. We don't believe that we are part of Adam's fallen race. That's problematic in a lot of cultures, church cultures, because if you haven't fallen, you don't need a savior. So we redefine Jesus not as saving us from God, not even necessarily as saving us from ourselves, even though that's part, that's an entry point, but saving us from the illusion of separation from God, from the illusion that God is mad at us, from the illusion that God demands blood sacrifice. All that is kind of part of our transformation and our evolution and unfoldment. All right, so what's the gist of tonight's or today's devotion? It is that Easter is around the corner and we celebrate the resurrection of Jesus. If you are connected astrologically or at least astronomically, you know that it coincides a little bit with like the spring or vernal equinox. When the light overtakes the dark, the days become longer, the night becomes less. That's also from ancient Egyptian lore of Set or Seti overcoming the night. So some of that is borrowed from both Egyptian culture that leads its way into our Christendom in some ways. But whatever that is, whatever resurrection Sunday is to you, I want you to have that for you. But it's the idea that death, crucifixion, a falling down, a being marginalized, whatever you want to put on that is not the end. There is a power that's greater that works in through around and as us that can bring us back. Whether that's the prodigal son coming to himself, realizing that he's created something that is not his best life or whether that is literally getting back up from people trying to assassinate your character or trying to disenfranchise you or isolate you, maybe family ostracized you in some way, maybe in church. A religion has made you an other or othered you in some ways. And so in all of that conversation, we bring back not just this idea of an Easter bunny, which I, the Easter bunny, I don't think is demonic. I don't pray against the Easter bunny. I'm glad for there to be an Easter bunny. It's not just an anti or being antithetical to secular, secular approach to Easter. But sometimes we can get caught up subliminally in, well, the resurrection is just about Jesus. And because he lives, I can face tomorrow. Because he got up, the world is now saved. Those are great theological points. But when we apply it personally, what is our resurrection? Is it just the resurrection of the dead that's speaking eschatologically about that great getting up morning, which I'm not opposed to that necessarily, but sometimes that puts our destiny out in the future. It puts us at the mercy of prophecy or fulfillment citations or external conditions in some ways or waiting on seasons or favor or who knows, yeah, waiting for Jesus to come back. But can the resurrection happen now and is it within us to happen? Look down if you will, if you have it with you, that second paragraph, I have to have him to read this.
Okay.
You have to hand it to me if you will.
I'll do it.
Oh, Brandy will not give up her cloth. Am I allowed to use your cloth?
Well, I don't want you to touch it with your fingers on the inside.
I am not allowed to touch her cloth. So let me get the gist of this second paragraph then I can talk about it. Because I can't read without this. Okay, here we go. All right, so this idea that the Apostle Paul gives us that if, if and it does, the same spirit that resided in Christ is within us, dwells in us, then it can call us out of our deaths. What is our death? Not really physical death, although I don't think that's above what God can do, but what about the death of bankruptcy? What about the death of a really bad credit score or bad decision? What about the death of, thank you, Jesus, I can see clearly now. What about the death of a divorce? Or what about the death of depression or thinking that you'll never get over the grief of losing a loved one? Yeah, those are all deaths. And so what about the death of your reputation? What about when you became an inclusionist, the death of relationships? Everybody that you have this shared history with, you no longer have a common present with them or a common future. All those are deaths in some ways, but that spirit that was in Christ is resonant within us to get us up, out and into something that looks a lot more like life than death, looks a lot more like glory than suffering. And so in that way, we celebrate, we celebrate the risen Christ that is in Jesus and the risen Christ within us. Amen.
By the way, Alita said Goody Mob with OutKast.
I know it's OutKast. I don't know if it's Goody Mob. It might be Goody Mob. I know that that was OutKast.
She said with OutKast. Okay.
Definitely, definitely Atlanta, the Dirty South. That's some OutKast right there. Thanks, Alita. All right, let's grab, you win by the way. A plus for you, Alita, with three extra points for adding Goody Mob. All right, let's grab our prayer at the very bottom together. Resurrection power. Awaken within me the same spirit that raised Christ from the dead. I may fall, but I know there is power in me enabling me to get back up again. Amen. Amen. Somebody let the church say amen. Welcome once again to Spirit and Truth Sanctuary's Inclusion 101. Thank you, Bishop, the late, great Bishop Carlton Demetrius Pearson for bringing to us The Gospel of Inclusion. What an amazing kind of textbook for, I don't even really want to call it just for inclusion. It's just a textbook for waking up. There's almost more questions. Have you noticed that almost every week we've had, the predominant nature of each week begins with questions? Does it begin with a lecture? It begins with like, have you considered? We were told this, but how does this, is this working for you now? I love this entire textbook. It's really, it is not even just religious. It's just for people who want to see themselves differently, see the human race, our history, our conditioning a little bit differently. All right, tonight's questions, we're going to talk about there being balance. Where there is balance, there is no evil. Our questions for this week. Question one, if God is the source of all, does evil come from God? Wait a minute, let me put some boom in it. Get it, get it, get it, get it. What? That's a difficult question, isn't it? Why? Because we have placed God in this narrative of good. God is good all the time, all the time. God is good. Yeah, that becomes a question of it. Is God just good? Or is there something other than just this definition of goodness? Let me, I'm getting into this too quickly, but if God is only good, then when bad things happen, that thus, Elaine Pagels, Dr. Elaine Pagels, that is the creation of the devil. If we define God as being only good, then when things happen that we can't explain that seem horrific or terrible or tragic and that are truly that way, then we have to have something to blame. And we can't blame it on God because we need to hold God as just as being that definition of good. So in comes the creation, the vacuum, the space necessary to create this idea of the devil. And so I don't want to take your devil away from you, but I just want to tell you where it comes from. I can tell you, from whence the devil doth hail, not from hell, H-E-L-L, but H-I-L. Where does the devil come from? Comes from our definition of God as only being good. Okay, number two, are people who carry out evil acts born evil? People who carry out really horrible things, were they born as being that? Interesting. Certainly a lot of Christian dynamic would say that that is true. They were born into Adam's fallen race. But so with that same argument, so are you. Why aren't you doing that level of evil act? Number three, does self-hatred cause repression and ultimately facilitate evil? Hmm. Do people who carry out atrocities love themselves? Do they have good self-esteem? Do they look in the mirror and say, this is good? You did something good when you created me, God. Were their religious conditionings, cultural, tribalistic, provincial exposures, something that made them feel good about themselves? Their home environment? If all that was good and then they carried out evil acts, what in the world? Or is there something else going on that involves some self-hatred, repression of some sort of human desire that turns into all that? We've got a lot to talk about, don't we, peoples? Yep, we're already all into it. All right, week 60, where there is balance, there is no evil. Anybody in the matrix, the limit, sorry, Mean Girls, the limit does not exist. In Matrix, the trick is not to bend the spoon. It is to realize there is no spoon. Yeah. All those are kind of deeper dives into philosophy. What is the nature of reality? What is this idea of evil? When there is balance, where there is balance, there is no evil. Pages, we're on page 81. Let me give you a little precursor, jumping in. If you want a real mind twister, if you want to really struggle through some reading, turn to Isaiah 45, chapter 45, and then read again in Isaiah, chapter 54. So all there in Isaiah, we know that scholars perceive Isaiah has three different authors. There is Isaiah, then there's what's called Deuteronomy Isaiah. So whoever the author of Deuteronomy uses the same syntax in a portion of Isaiah, it's almost, you can almost not deny that the same person who wrote the book Deuteronomy also wrote a portion of Isaiah because the language, the themes, the narration is almost exactly the same. So.
Tell everyone, I'm so sorry. I'm messing with the camera. Don't let it distract you. Give me a second.
Stop messing with the camera. I'm saying important things over here, Brandon.
I apologize.
Yes, Brandon is messing with the camera. She has adjusted me. How many times have I moved my chair tonight?
I just want you to look, you know, optimal.
You need to get closer to the camera. Ooh, uh-uh, that's too close. Then we'll be seeing all that. Well, thank you for getting our camera straight. Okay, so when you begin to unpack Isaiah, we have different writers, but it's perceivable that chapter 45 and 54 were written by the same person, not the prophet Isaiah, but the same writer. In that writing, there is some questions about the nature of evil. Is it from God? Is it something else? If there is evil that we have to ascribe, are there many gods? And so when you read it, remember with the lens that you read it, it's not talking about the devil there. Or sorry, it's not talking about other gods in that narrative. It's speaking about this God called the devil. So I formed the light. I create the darkness. I create peace. I create calamity. I, the Lord God, do all of these things. That's chapter 45 of Isaiah. He's not talking about Baal or Baal. We're not talking about Molech or El or these other gods that were kind of in circular in those moments. This is a questioning of this bad God. When bad things happen, how do we blame it? Peace and calamity, peace and war, good and bad, rain and sunshine. I, the Lord God, do all of these things. Okay, so then you jump to chapter 54 and the same writer says, what is a weapon? And so we all love Fred Hammond's, no weapon formed against me. That comes from Isaiah, chapter 54. But the real truth of that verse is not that no weapon formed against me can prosper. It's that there is no such thing as a weapon. Now that's Matrix. The spoon does not exist. So when Fred Hammond is saying, no weapon formed against me prospers, I perceive from his religious conditioning, he's saying, there are lots of weapons. There's lots of enemies out there trying to kill me. But what Isaiah is saying is there is no such thing as a weapon. There's no weapon because it all comes from God. What you perceived as a weapon was being used to push into different places of unfoldment and your destiny. So Isaiah, chapter 54, I create, God creates the blacksmith, the creator of the weapon for its use. King James says destruction. Other better scholarly texts say for its use, for its purpose. No weapon formed against you shall prosper. So in essence, what Isaiah is saying is what you perceived as a weapon was really just a catalyst to push you into the next place of your unfoldment. Right? And so how do we reconcile this idea of that God uses things at times that can be for the furtherance of our unfoldment? I wouldn't even say good there. I would just say for the evolution of our consciousness. We say it this way at Spirit and Truth Sanctuary, the universe, God, Holy Ghost, life, whatever you want to call it, will sends to us whatever is necessary for the evolution of our consciousness. Whether that be the evolution of your racism, bigotry, homophobia, misogyny, xenophobia, selfishness, androcentric views, whatever, Eurocentric ideas, colonization, separation, hierarchy, caste. All of those are lower rungs of consciousness in the human psyche. And so in that way, when you exist in those things, the universe is going to present you with opportunities to see the self. Yeah? So Jesus, stay with me, suffered from a little bit of racism. He was raised culturally Jewish, Hebrew, and they still had laws about slaves or people that they had conquered and that you weren't really supposed to negotiate or talk with them. If you read some of the conquer or conquest narratives of the Old Testament, God is committing genocide all over the place. They were taking people's land, conquering in the name of God, you know? And at times, when we didn't commit, when the Hebrews did not commit complete genocide of the Hivites or Hittites or Ammonites or Amalekites, then, okay, so they're still around. How do we deal with these people? Well, you deal with them as slaves. They are indentured to the Hebrews. And so they're not quite, they're not really God's children. They're not to eat. So when Jesus approaches or when the sour Phoenician woman, that's fancy for saying Canaanite, a Canaanite woman approaches Jesus for help, remember, we, the Hebrews, took the land of Canaan. Okay, they took the promised land from the inhabitants, which was the land of Canaan, thus the Canaanites. Y'all getting this? Y'all getting this geopolitical stuff that we're laying down from the Bible? So in that way, Jesus is now indoctrinated culturally that the Canaanites are lesser than we are. So when the Canaanite or sour Phoenician woman asks for Jesus's help, he says, I'm not called to you. I was only sent for my people, for the house of Israel. And then he calls her not only a dog, but her people dogs. And in some translations, it's that we own you. It's not good to give to our ownership, possessive possession, our dogs, the holy bread. So you might think that Jesus was always just operating in Son of God. So you might think that Jesus was always just operating in Son of God. There was some Son of Man that we had to deal with. There was some humanity, a lot of religions don't like to, a lot of denominators don't like to see that. Because it it messes with the hierarchy of Christianity, that Jesus is the only way. That becomes very violent in its application, because if you think that Jesus is perfect. Then Jesus is your only way, the Jesus person. But when you see that conversation. Where Jesus is dealing with his lower nature. What did he deal with in the wilderness? Fame, fortune, ego, power. The desire for glory, all of that. What is he dealing with the sour Phoenician woman? Misogyny, racism, xenophobia. What's he dealing with with the woman at the well? We don't talk to him. We don't, we don't deal with Samaritans. All that are just little, they're little patterns. That Jesus was not completely as perfect as we thought. So in that way, as as the universe sends to us what we need. For the evolution of our consciousness, it was also awakening in Jesus, the higher self. Roman, uh, sorry, Hebrews, chapter five, once perfected, he became the author of salvation. Many people, it it makes their entire theology crumble when you show them the humanity of Jesus. My God, it's already eight o'clock and I haven't even started the teaching yet. Alright, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna stop with all that. So I I may skip around a little bit, Brandon. But that's necessary to get into the.
There's already twenty comments ready to go for you.
Okay, so that that's, that's a good, that's a good foundation, guys. For us deconstructing Christianity and even Jesus as the only way, as a hierarchy. That must be deconstructed, that must be reconstructed. We must rethink, repent of this i- idea that our Jesus. Is the only way. It's not the Jesus of history that's the only way. It's the way of Jesus, not just the teachings, but even the way of Jesus un- uh unfolding into divinity. Allowing the divinity to become the greater part of him. And so in that way, we don't consider Jesus as being evil. But just in need of, in need of unfoldment, a need of further evolution. Now that. That messes with a lot of people's theology, because even the way they look at scripture. Is, well, you know, there's some issues with Paul's writings, Moses has some issues with some things and. You know, Paul, Paul and James disagree on this and that, but we really look to the words in red. But I'm here to tell you, as a, at least as a theologian, that there's some problems with the words in red. Jesus falls short at times of divinity with some of his cultural conditioning and some of his provincial thinking. Alright, so let's jump in page eighty one, the beast is often beautiful. While beauty is often beastly, both of these realities within us engage mind. And spirit in a conversation that at times becomes a violent argument. A war, Paul, the apostle, a war against the flesh. My spirit is warring against the flesh. We are, we argue not because the two disagree, but because they often do agree. And we presume they're not supposed to. So think about Jesus in the temple being seemingly violent. But was the violence used for good in some ways? We don't even know that that's a true story, but it's what we have, is the text that we have. Jesus taking a whip and clearing out the the money changers. Really wasn't about selling things or about having money. It was about sacrifices. Putting a burden on people's, people's minds, you must come to the temple to be atoned. And then we're gonna sell you the sacrifice so that it becomes a little bit of the fox guarding the hen house. Uh, or uh, what would you say, a monopoly of sorts? We, you're having to travel long distances to get here. You can't carry all your sacrifices with you. So we're gonna, we're gonna put an upcharge on them in the, in the sancti- in the temple. So that we make more money on your sacrifices by keeping you in the idea that you're fallen. You must come and atone, blood must atone for you. Jesus was challenging all of that. Challenging the the most mosaic idea of without bloodshed, there is no remission of sins. Where does that come from? Who began this idea of bloodshed, remitting sins and having, having to do it yearly? Sorry, well, I'll, I'll leave that there with you. But uh, in that moment, the humanity of Jesus was holy, was it not? If that moment happened, it would have been a holy moment of anger. We call it sometimes a righteous indignation. And so Jesus allowing that anger to to have its way in him. Sometimes we see Dr. King as kind of the Paschal Lamb, very nonviolent. And we resist the Malcolm X. We resist the Black Panther movement. We resist. The aggression of a Hosea Williams or Cornel West, um, or or a Black, even Black Lives Matter at times. Why? Because we don't like that uprising, or or some don't, but. Isn't that, isn't that, isn't that humanity just as spiritual as as even being passive or being peaceful? Is peace at all costs really peace? Are we to be peacekeepers or peacemakers? It's an interesting question. We insist they remain in opposition to one another. This makes us feel uh more comfortable. I love this. I I highlighted this in the notes. This is like households in racist communities. Where parents notice that children who do not learn to discriminate based on ethnicity enjoy playing with everyone. Ever seen kids in a, in a playground or in a sandbox? They don't really ask what color someone is. They just kinda ask, do you wanna play? Let's play kickball, let's play tag, let's chase, let's swing, whatever. Uh, until they, until they are taught, people of different skin colors are not supposed to get along. Hmm, till we're taught, we're not supposed to, supposed to go. Hatred does not come naturally, only love does. Hatred is taught and and a learned response. So this is not what you will get in most of your traditional. Uh, theological biblical teachings. Why? Because it's all a setup. We have to be Adam's race. We have to be fallen. We have to be sinful to do what? Make space for a mediator. We need a savior. We need to be fallen so that we need a savior, so that we can be redeemed to God. All of that is contingent upon our fallenness. So we have to be born into sin in order to make room for a sinless sacrifice, a mediator, a middleman. To reconnect us to God. So we don't, we don't get rid of Jesus i- i- in inclusion. We redefine Jesus. Jesus doesn't come to save us from our fallenness. But to to wake our consciousness up that we thought we were enemies of God. We we have never been enemies of God, Colossians, chapter one. We perceived enmity with God. Why? Because we think that our sinful lust of the flesh are so bad. So God who created you to see a beautiful human being and go, wow, that is a. And to have a thought of of having being, seeing that naked body is so bad to us. It is so sinful to us. And so Jesus comes and saves us from the natural desires that God gave us? How do we reconcile these things? How does, how, if God is the source of all, where does? Why do we look at things that are, why do we want certain things? Why do we even foods or or nice, a nice car or? My goodness, where does the list, where does the list end? So all of that really is kind of a, a kind of a setup in some ways. Um, so hey, uh, so let me ask you this. So a child that is born needs instruction to some degree. They, but I would say a child is born more morally neutral. Not evil, not good, but an open, empty, blank canvas. And we can paint onto the canvas of that child's consciousness, love, joy, peace, inclusivity. We can paint on it selfishness, racism, otherness. It is an op- it's an open field of possibility. Some children are born crying. Some children are born wanting to hug. Babies wanting to cling to something. Some children throw fits, fall on the floor and throw fit. Other children laugh at times. Some children hit, no, and they, when they learned how to say no, no. Other children share, share things with their, with other. It's not always about an innate thing. The children are really a blank canvas, through which we can paint on that, on that canvas, the higher self. Or we can awaken a lower self. The so-called argument between our spiritual and earthly selves, our good and evil sides. Is equally manufactured. It was never really authentic. It originated in God. It was recreated. In each new generation, uh, who uh, who made the same errors as the Puritans. What what are those errors? Rejecting one side of the natural human duality as evil. And thereby stunting the essential meaning of humanity, my God. So I'll give you a brief history on Pur- Puritanism and puritanical thinking. So the Puritans came to America from uh, from Europe. Seeking religious uh freedom of expression. But the reason they're called, they were, they became called Puritans is because uh, they became very sexually pious. Uh, in some ways, uh, even demeaning or demonizing some of African ancestral connection. So let me just, let me just paint the, paint the behind the scenes picture for you. Puritans, when they, when they engaged in in the early slaves of America. Wanted to teach, teach Africans how to dress, how to cover their bodies. Because the showing of a body is is evil. And so Christianity became equated even with moral dress codes. And now, I I won't say the names to disparage, but even black denominations were very specific about. Women who can and can't wear certain things, showing parts of your body. A lot of that is left over. From the demonizing of African, uh, of African cultural roots. And just normal attire coming from a very hot sunny sunny continent. And people coming from Europe who were in rain and and cloudiness and covering their bodies were not used to seeing. A body that was more exposed. And so the body, the black body became demons. Cover it up, hide it. Okay, so in that way, let me, let me tell you how how it informs us here today. Not just religiously, but even culturally. So in the, in in during reconstruction, when black families begin to want to have better jobs, better pay. Working for white corporations, not just uh, a- as more menial uh, or domesticated tasks. But tasks that use the brain, sales, advertising, management, those kinda things. There was a, a strong tendency of the the black nuclear family to assimilate. Into white puritanical culture. Am I preaching to anybody tonight? Y'all here? Y'all feeling this right here? So wh- what's the point, Dee? So as black families assimilated into suit, tie. Doing it and and not wearing a dashiki or something that shows the arms or the midriff or the breast or or the leg or the foot or whatever. Then that, that became a sentiment of sexual um piety. So then there became a monolith, in the, at least in the black nuclear family, wanting to assimilate into white culture. So what, what, so think about the sixties, the press against that. We don't wanna be, we don't wanna be. Part of the hegemony. We don't wanna be white Eurocentric. We want to be our own African expression. Yeah, and so the throwback to African roots and all that in the late fifties and early sixties, you you can kinda follow the history of that. What is the point I'm getting to? So as an inclusionist, I understand. When there, when there is black, when there's homophobia in the black church, you think it, it kinda doesn't make sense because you're going like, no, hold on. So the black prophetic pulpit has always spoken truth to power, always spoken to the systems at large. Why is the black prophetic pulpit now speaking against the marginalized community? Let's just say of black Q plus, the Q plus community. Why, why the degradation of black bodies that are same gender loving or trans or queer or whatever, bi- bisexual? Why, why can't you make this delineation? Why can't you see that the same Bible? That was used to to enforce, reinforce slavery. Is als- is also now being used in black pulpits against black queer bodies. Y'all with me? It comes, it doesn't come from an original hatred out of African sentimentality. It comes from an assimilation to fit in with white puritanical culture. That anything that does not fit this mold or this mode of success, we deny it and denounce it. So in order to heal, but of course, now hear me, before you jump in the chat and tell me this. There's just as much homophobia in white pulpits, maybe even more than there is in black pulpits. I I understand who I'm talking to tonight. I get white homophobia. It is, that's where do you think the black pulpit learned it from? However, what makes it difficult to reconcile is, is the white people in America haven't had to fight for their civil rights as much. Didn't feel as disenfranchised, marginalized, uh, di- in a diaspora exiled from the, from a, from their. Uh, from their, from a motherland. We took land. We were kind of the oppressors. We were the colonizers. Uh, we became the the dominant, uh, um, the majority in society. So in that way, it's more understandable. Well. Yeah, I know why white people are homophobic, because there's always been a lot of hatred in the white church. But coming out of oppression, especially during Jim Crow slavery, reconstruction of the black church. It was a sanctuary of human rights, civil rights. So when you see black, the black prophetic pulpit being homophobic. It really isn't, it is not native to that mind. That is an adoption of white puritanical culture. Was it, was that ten minutes worth? That I hope it was. What's the point of this? In order to be inclusive architects. We have to be able to understand where homophobia comes from to heal it. I've got a, in order to be a bridge to it, I can't just condemn the black prophetic pulpit that may become homophobic at times. Um, but to understand why, why is the pulpit behaving in this way? Where does this come from? To know where it comes from helps us to heal it a little bit better. Hope that's okay. If it's not. Well, welcome to Spirit of True Sanctuary. What can I say? Alright, we were created as one, all things working together, good evil binaries. Uh, the music of all life is harmony, albeit that we may not be able to hear entirely. I love that. The beauty and the beast are soulmates with a covenant to coexist. It's all working in the same thing. What God calls upon us to do. Is balance the two. That's atonement or at one ment. Love that. Balance of beast and beauty means that rather than suppressing some aspect of yourself. You celebrate it as part of the complete person you are. Come on now. That, that's, that's giving you a hint to one of our questions tonight. Is, does evil just happen? Or sometimes i- is it the result of a suppressing of something? A repressing of something. Someone was uh, trying to criticize my work. As being inclusive and and affirming in the LGBTQ plus community years ago and said, well. Look at the way that, look at these gay pride parades. You know, and and the extent to which they, they're all in your face and this and da 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 da. That can't be God. That can't be right. That can't be a righteous way of living. And I explained to this person, any culture, any expression, anything that is natural. Born into us, that is repressed, will not find its way easily and smoothly to the surface. It will explode. So what does that mean? Sometimes what we are seeing in any marginalized community. It, I'm not just, not just our Q plus community, in any marginalized community is an old, think about in the sixties, black power. Well, if a white person said white power, we would go, you're a racist. But we understand where black power comes from. Why? It's been suppressed. The power was taken away for a season. And so. It doesn't, it doesn't always come back up to the surface as, let's just all be, you know, Mandela, Nelson Mandela. Let's all be Mahatma Gandhi. Some, the Malcolm X is understandable. The nation of Islam, it's underst- Louis Farrakhan, it's, I'm not saying it's right or wrong. It's under, it's an understandable reaction to oppression and to suppression. So take that framework and apply it to anything in life. What about poverty? Being raised in poverty and all of a sudden you get a little piece of change. Are you thinking, I need to invest that in the stock market or into an annuity or uh, to diversify a portfolio? No, sometimes it is, I'm buying this car, I'm getting this cold gold chain, I wanna get this expensive handbag. Think about this, in in religion, women, white women were told you can't wear makeup. Makeup is against, against the Bible in some ways, yeah, outwardly adornment. So when somebody got free, that thing that was suppressed, and this, one of my close friends, Jay Baker, his mother, Tammy Faye Baker. She didn't, she didn't wear a little bit, a little bit of eyeshadow. I mean, Tammy Faye, almost, it almost looked like clown makeup at times, right? If you look charitably toward her life, toward the suppression of of her creativity. Her makeup became her way of saying, I have been oppressed, I won't be that way anymore. Think about, think about preacher's kids who were raised under too much suppression. When they get into college. Oh, Lord, the preacher's kids go buck wild. It's not about right or wrong. The question we're asking is does, does suppressing something? Not allowing a normal balance of something, does it create something that is an overreaction to something? So at least we're, we're thinking psychologically tonight. Alright, the belief that something uh, about us needs to be exterminated. Leads to repression and then depression. Yeah, and then I would say, and then to. Yeah, and then I would say, and then to uh, and to an overthrowing of that thing. Then often, here it is, to truly violent, terrible acts, uh some humans commit as a way of fulfilling that belief. That they are inherently evil. Have you ever studied, and this is, it's a, it's a dark study. Maybe I shouldn't even use that word. It's a, it's an intense study of the, the psyche of serial killers. And, and what their environment was like, what they were told many, oftentimes very religious. Uh being, being shamed, being told that everything was evil. Um, one of the serial killers in Atlanta, I won't say the name because some of. Uh, there's still some, there's still some things unsolved about some of the mystery. But when you go into his, uh into this individual, which I, I taught in prisons while he was in the prison, which was bizarre to see this. This accused serial killer, sitting in front of me, listening to me teach scripture. Uh but if you look at his background, he was raised very religiously. Uh he was, he was effeminate by nature. And so was, was leaning toward uh an expression of same gender loving relationships and attract, same sex attraction. But his environment may ostracize him for that. And so instead of losing his community, family, loved ones, friends, church, belonging, he pushed it down. It came out in other ways. Yeah, so think about, think about other, the, the, the past of other people who have done horrible things. What was suppressed in their lives? What was pushed down that came up in very, and I'm certainly not. I'm not saying it's okay to do that. We want to be self-aware that the things that happen to us, that we can overcome that without harming others. However. These things do happen at times. Everybody doesn't have the same toolset to deal with the oppression that's happened in our lives. And so. When you see a Martin King, when you see a Mahatma Gandhi. When, when you see a Desmond Tutu, unbelievable, unbel- unbelievable human spirit. Everyone is not always that way. It's, they don't always deal with it so pe- so peacefully and so productively. There are overreactions to suppression. All right, uh I have talked way too long tonight, but I felt you needed some of that history. Um, why? It's not, it's not making black homophobia better, black church homophobia better. It's saying, if, if we are going to heal it, if we're going to move forward, let's understand, let's not just condemn the persons. Let's condemn where it comes from. Let's understand where it comes from. Now we can heal. This is my obvious. All right, peoples. I won't even read the questions. I've talked too long. Let's talk.
So there are a lot of answers. Lot of interest on this topic. I love it. I have like a total insight into where everyone's minds are going.
Like it.
I love it. Um, I will say, I, I just have to give a quick little shout out. Um, I, earlier when you were talking about the song. During the devotion, I don't know what was going on with YouTube. I think I told you guys, I wasn't seeing your comments. So Sharnice. Lulu, Jacoby, all had guessed Outcast as well. Sharnice, big shout to Sharnice, got in there and said the album is Southern Playa.
Southern Playa listic Cadillac funky music.
Okay, so I thought you would enjoy that. Now Bill Robinson guessed the average white band. So I know, but I just thought, yeah, good, good guess, but I thought that we would just give Bill a shout out as well. Anyway. I was wondering, I, I, I was checking to see, cause Mike said, Mike Williams texted me, I don't see YouTube, and I wasn't seeing anybody's comment. I was like, where's everybody? Where's everybody? And then I finally saw, you guys are here. Um, anyway, all right, let's jump in. Number one, if God is the source of all, does evil come from God? Probably have more than a dozen answers here. Mike shared, I do not believe um a God who literally is love. Is capable of creating evil. I think human beings possess that capacity all by themselves.
So that's getting into Mike, uh some interesting conversation of. Are, are we divine? Are we partially divine? Uh, you know, in the new thought, in the unity circle, Mike, it would be, we're not, uh, we're not. Creations of God, how would they say it? We are, we are, we're not pieces of God, we are God expressed in our peace. So uh in that way, like a, a drop of the ocean contains all of the ocean in it. I actually don't know where I land with all that, to be honest with you. Um, I think you guys know me, I don't really harbor beliefs. I consider a lot of things, and if it's helpful and useful, I use it. But I like that perspective too, Mike, that. That possibly theologically, there is a little difference in humanity and divinity. And that's okay too. That's all welcome to the table. It's a good point. Thanks, Mike.
All right, Richard shared, to paraphrase scripture, all things work for the good uh of God. Can we assume that all things include both good as well as evil or bad?
Yeah, e- especially if, if the evil is been misdefined as evil. How about if we just say all things work together for all, not for good? Yeah, that's a, that's a, get kind of caught up into the minutia of the words there, Richard, right? So. Um, yeah, I, I don't know exactly where I land on it, but I, I love the way that your mind thinks because. Um, maybe what we perceived as something that was evil, was being used for good. You know, that's also a little bit. We have to be cautious, I have to be cautious, Richard, of spiritually bypassing things. What does that mean? Well, don't, don't mourn your abuse, don't mourn your neglect, your, your marginalization. Your disenfranchising, why? God was using you for good. I've heard the extremes of some of that. Richard, that even s- some in the black church pulpit have said, God used slavery to get black people to America. I don't know how to reconcile that. I, I don't wanna just completely throw it out, cause I think I wanna chew on it a little bit, but. Would our understanding of God use something so horrible? To produce, does God, does, do we, does God necessitate evil to produce good? For instance. Does, does nine eleven, think about what happened at nine eleven in America. It brought people of all different races together in the aftermath. Because look, in downtown New York, everybody was, was gray. Everybody was the color of ash, ash all over their faces. I'm not belittling that at all. Uh but we say, well, you know, that. The buildings falling did bring Americans closer together. But does God use it? Or did the planes that flew into the Trade Center Towers, was that a result of their marginalization? Their demonizing or not understanding of their own culture, their own religion? Uh seeing America as, as an evil empire, which is arguable as well. You know, h- how do we reconcile things that happen bad that God, God? God can use it for good, but does God send it to do good? Yeah, those. Yeah, some of like, once we start that conversation, Richard, where do the, where does it end? Yeah, it's interesting. Thanks.
Bobby shared, God is the source of all. He knows the end from the beginning. God allows things to happen because he's about free will. Evil does not come from God because God is love?
So I would pu- push back on that a little bit, Miss Bobby, just from my own ex- my own experience with scripture. That if, if we say God knows all and orchestrates all. That does, yeah, like you said, that does, that does mess with this idea of free will. Are we fatalistic? Um, are, are, are our steps already determined by God? Some of that bleeds into Calvinistic thought. Um, where there's an elect and the elect are already chosen by God. It's, and I, I don't wanna be careful because I know some of us have children. Um, and um family members and friends who are named certain things, so I'd, I'd wanna be cautious with that, but. Saying that we are royalty and others aren't, that we are chosen. Wh- what's at stake here? Are, are some chosen at the mercy? If someone is chosen. That, that naturally assumes a less chosenness, right? If we are special, if we're called out. Then some others aren't called according to the purposes of God. And so. We need to be at least aware of Calvinistic thinking, uh which I think can be very, very dangerous. Um, when we were in Switzerland, Miss Bobby, uh I took a long train ride with someone who was Calvinist. And Brandy was looking at me like, don't do it, don't go there, let's enjoy our vacation. I was so much wanting to go. I wanna unpack with you this Calvinistic thought, but I refrain from it. Um, but in that way, Miss Bobby, uh if God knows the end from the beginning. It seems at times, Brandy and I are playing chess this week, so when we get a free moment. Is God, is God moving us as pawns on a chessboard? If so, think about the life of Job.
Wait, what did you say? Well, try, I'm trying. You're just beating me every game.
I whipped her tail last night. I, I, I gave her some, I even let her take her queen back and all this stuff, and I finally said, Brandy. You're almost beating me, so I ain't helping you no more. You just gonna have to take this whipping. You gonna have to take this whipping. Learn, learn by losing in chess. Um, but in that way, Miss Bobby, we have to be aware that are, are we pawns on a chessboard? Um, does God allow Satan into Job's life to, to kill ten? Of Job's children, even though Job got twenty children back, how do you replace ten children? What, if, if life is sacred to God, is it? Were Job's first ten children sacred? How does that bleed into pro-life, pro-choice? Uh, the sacredness of, of the womb of a woman? What are these conversations? I- if God knows the end from the beginning, does that deterministically put God as a puppet master? And, and, and like you said, Miss Bobby, where does free will play into that? Do we by, by our own free will? Choose to produce evil? Uh is, is even that an apologetic because we can't see God as neutral? We refuse to see that God is more neutral than good? All of these are just chances to step back and say, maybe there's not a right or wrong answer. But maybe it's just a chance to just kind of recalibrate what we think God is. That's great, Bobby. Thanks.
Danny shared, maybe.
Danny who?
Jarrah, our good friend.
Really? What you, what you mean?
She's not even a friend, she's family.
Then, so congratulations, Danny, by the way, uh starting their new work in uh near or out, right outside of Cleveland. Tennessee, and so we have another sister community. Congrats, thanks Danny for being here.
She shared, maybe contrast is a better descriptor than evil. It's only when the pain of staying the same is worse than the pain of change that growth occurs. Without contrast or evil, there is stagnation. Do I believe evil exists? Yes. Do I believe that atrocities should, should be. Spiritually bypassed? No. But I do think that looking at things from a bigger picture can be healing when we're ready. Peace and calamity are two sides of the same coin.
Woo, that's some deepness there, Dan- Danny Jarrah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hmm. So let's, let's talk cosmologically for a moment, Danny. I know you, your mind would, would work this way. Eckhart Tolle, uh, let's see, Neil Donald Walsh, several mystics, modern day mystics. Proposed this idea, Danny, that our creation. Is not limited to this idea that we are created to overcome evil. A lot of Christian. Dogma is that, that we are, we came, we incarnated into our earth selves. To make the earth God's footstool again. You, like me, Danny, were raised on a lot of kingdom teaching. Lot of power in it, also a lot of. A lot of authority and domination structures in that. And so it's okay for us to, to appreciate what we were taught. And to also say, yeah, some of that has to be, um, has to be filtered through a little bit better lens. So in that way, Tolle and Neil Donald Walsh offered to us. That God incarnated in the flesh, both as Jesus and as us at some point. To know itself better. Okay, so, so the, why am I saying that, Danny? Because you use the word contrast. How does, how does a supreme omniscient thing? Know itself unless it can see itself in all different forms? So self-actualized, self-realized is an, at least another way of, of understanding our creation, not just here. As um, as warriors, fighting against the evils of the devil. Then that, that places us always on a soldier, a battlefield of some sort. We're always at, at war with something. But in essence, we are, we are God's ability to know God's self better in some ways. And so. We provide the contrast to know God. So if we deny our humanity. Then God is not knowing itself through our humanity. That's an interesting conversation, isn't it? Thanks, Danny.
Lulu shared, our creator, source, or source encompasses and is infused into everything. Not remembering this creates illusions out of ignorance, which can manifest into evil. It typically stems from being unloved.
Read the, read the middle part of that again. I wanna hear about the illusion.
Uh, let's see, our creator or source encompasses and is infused into everything. Not remembering this. Creates illusions out of ignorance, which manifests into evil.
So the ignorance being the precipitation of evil. Or the, the lack of knowing the self, uh so, so cratic approach there. I like that, uh Lulu, thank you for that. Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with that. I would think, I would say, I would, not to qualify it anyway, Lulu, but to add from my perspective. The lack of knowing the self. Is, is a source of, of something that expresses as atrocity. Not knowing the self, not accepting the self, uh not celebrating the self. And so think about what role religion plays in demonizing the self. Demonizing the authen- authenticity of the self. And so, yeah, that's a great entry point. Thanks, Lulu.
Gaia shared, I think God is love, hate and beyond. We haven't learned enough about love and hate, and we have been stuck in dualistic thought, leading to the whole Christianity versus narcissism debate.
Woo, Gaia, you always take us there, don't you? Love it. So let, let me, let me add, um, let me add, uh. A little allegory for that guy, for us to chew on. Maybe you've thought about this before. So think about the interconnectedness of fear and faith. Okay, they're little. They're seeming, seemingly polar opposites, like love and hate, good and evil, God and devil. Fear and faith seem to be polar opposites in some ways, right? But if you think about it, they're really more, they're more intersectional. They're, they're, they inform each other. So. If I fear, okay, if I fear a rattlesnake. I have faith in its poison. Yeah, so if I fear, uh, a prosecuting attorney. I have faith in their level of, of prescribed authority. If I fear death, I have faith in trying to live a healthy life. So it, they're, they're not really opposites in that way, right, Gaia? They, they kind of inform each other. In some ways, they're just different takes. On the same t loss or the same end game, in, in some ways. Oh, that's good. Thanks, Gaia.
Jacoby said, many limit who or what God is, but if God is truly all, capital A L L, then even contrasts come from God. For instance, dark light, above beneath, water, dry places, so all is God no matter how it's labeled.
Thank you, Jacoby. Yeah, that's, that's really good. By the way, your name came up, uh Jacoby. Two nights ago, we were, we're in, so Brandy and I are still in Chapel Hill, North Carolina. We're going to youth tomorrow, Friday.
Yes.
But we drove up forty minutes to Durham.
Show that picture.
To have, yeah, you have it on the phone. Uh, to have dinner with Tracy and Owen McNeil, who, uh, she's. Uh, Pastor Tracy is one of our, uh, one of our kind of networking ministries, Peace Place. And she just said, she said, Dee, I just can't describe to you. When I talked to Jacoby and Sharnice and Kim Cockrell and all the people from the conference, she said, I just feel. I just feel at peace. I feel my, those are my people. Um, yes. Uh, so let me, um, read the last part of Jacoby's questioning into, cause I wanna, I wanna speak to the, the all, about the allness.
But if God is truly all, then even contrasts come from God.
Yeah, so in, in the allness, uh.
All is God no matter how it's labeled. He, he said, dark light, above beneath, water, dry places, so all is God no matter.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yes, yes. Thank you, thank you, Jacoby, for that. So we have a description, Jacoby, of. Not a synchronization, but a synthesizing of kind of trying to harmonize nature. So we're, we're here in this little rental for some days and with, with our daughter. So we watched uh this, this nature show. And we love nature shows, we love to see the, the fish and the animals and all that. But it's difficult because every part of a nature show is predator and prey. And of course, we love the Lion King, we love the Circle of Life, but it's still brutal. It is still very brutal. And even though the lion goes back into the ground, that fertilizes the grass, that the antelope eat. The grass ain't bloody. The grass doesn't die a painful death of being choked to death or eaten, eaten alive. You know, like a, a lion eating a water buffalo, or, or taking the baby of a wildebeest, or it's just, it's hard. It's hard to see it. People who like to see that are attracted to UFC. People who like to see that are attracted to UFC. They're attracted to ultimate fighting. That's their lower nature, and I'm not ashamed to say it. I think people who are attracted to bloody sports. That's the that's the lower nature. That's the lower animalistic nature that has not evolved yet. But in that way, Jacob, we get this. This kind of beautiful poetry in the Book of Revelation. Where the leopard, the lion, the young wolf, whatever, will lie down with the lamb. So let let's. Forget animals. The predator will be synthesized with the prey. Okay, could we say it this way? The rich and the poor will come together. The included and the dis- the disenfr- the marginalized will come back together. The native and the refugee will will be seen as one. The male and the female will be as one. How about that, Jacoby? Yeah. And so. Even though I don't prescribe a lot to the imagery of the Book of Revelation, there are some beautiful moments. That we see this allness. That predator, prey, creator, creation, uh, good, evil. Con- all of it kind of comes back in. To this spiritual oneness. That's the way I see this, the scripture leading us, Jacoby. What do I mean? Jesus gives us kind of this. A little bit of a pecking order of a a thought progression. Watch this. The law. The law and the prophets were until John. Since that time, the kingdom has been preached and all are pressing into this idea of the kingdom. So. That's only about four different levels. Let's start with garden. The original intention of God or fellowship communion with creation. We lose that. In the binary, now we need a law. So we go garden, garden, law. We don't know what to do, so God has to give us law. We don't know how to hear God, so God has to give us prophets. We don't know how to connect to God, so God, we don't know how to connect to Jesus, so Jesus, uh, God sends a forerunner, John the Baptist. We don't hear, we don't understand um. Our our incarnation, so God sends an incarnation, Jesus. We don't understand grace, so God sends us Paul to teach us grace. We don't understand oneness with God, so God sends us a teaching of beholding the glory of God in the mirror. But where we end in glory is where we begin in garden. Everybody see that? So instead of being anachronistic or a timeline or linear. It really is a cyclical thing. It's a time continuum. That the garden, the law, the prophets, Jesus, John, the apostle. All of it was operating outside of time, Ecclesiastes three, that which was. Is now, that which will be, has been before. And God causes, verse fourteen of Ecclesiastes three, Ecclesiastes three. History to repeat itself. Requires an account, a cer- a circling of history. So in that way, Jacoby, there is an allness of God, right? That it all. It all is God. We're just stuck in linear thinking, not able to see it. I love that.
All right, um, all right, we we we're gonna pace through this just a tad. But it's so good. It's so great, guys.
Get what you want.
And uh, there's so much good for two and three. So for for number one, a couple of things, um. Elita shared, God is love, what comes with that? Mankind will always judge with human eyes, which I really love. Uh, but I wanted to to mention this, uh, Be Woke asked a question. Does Isaiah forty-five seven? Mean God is the creator of evil? Well, over on Facebook, that was on YouTube. Uh, Luis Melancia shared, Isaiah forty-five seven says that he creates evil, but I take that as poetry. I think that evil is the absence of good or God, like darkness is the absence of light. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, uh, in that way, Luis and and Be Woke, um, there is not, there is actually no such thing as darkness. In the universe. Right? It's just a shadow. So when the planets, at at least in our solar system, when our planets. Impede or or obstruct the sun in any way, we have night. Right? But is even the night real? No, the the night shines as the day to God. So what we perceive as night is just the moon intersecting. A portion of the light, right? But if you get out, if you get out of the earth's. I don't I don't recall it, either stratosphere or its limitation. And you 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 look through a telescope or like the Hubble telescope. You don't see darkness throughout the universe. All there is is light. Now planets can find their way astronomically into. An orbiting pattern that creates the illusion of darkness, but it's just a shadow. Ooh, can I preach? Yea, though I walk through the valley of the what? Talk to me, talk to me, preachers. Shadow of death. Death is not real. It is a shadow. It's a transcending from one iteration to another, right? And so. In in that way, Luis and Be Woke. There there are some illusory ideas that we have perceived as truth. That really are just shadow beliefs in some ways. That's great. Thanks.
Uh, let's see, Elise shared, although I don't like the word evil, I can perceive God as the plural. Let us make man in our image, so God is all. I I like that. It's kind of a theme, right? That if God is good, God's evil as well.
So so I think what we're really, what we're, the basic of what basis of what we're uncovering here. Is a struggle. We're really putting on front street our struggle to say. God is good and evil. We're struggling with that. Why why are we struggling so bad? Because we have been eating. For so many years of the tree of the knowledge of good and evil. So in that way, whether it's Moses or Hammurabi. Or Egyptian, whoever gave us the first five books of the Bible, that brings to us this don't eat of that. Could it be that in this physical incarnation, we are almost incapable of understanding allness? Yeah, and so. It makes to me that the more beau- the more beautiful. The Genesis metaphor becomes, I don't need there to be a tree. I don't need there to be an apple or a pomegranate. I don't get two shifts what what the fruit was, or if there was even a garden. It is an incredible metaphor for consciousness, is it not? Look at what we're proving it right now. We're struggling through these ideas, is it? Well, does God create the capacity for evil, but free will, but? Well, God, but humanity. These are all our apologetic ways of trying to say God isn't evil. Because we can't, we can't reconcile it. Why? Because we've been eating of the tree for so many years that we can't say that God is neutral. Because we need to be God, we need God to be on the side of the Atlanta Falcons and against the New Orleans Saints. We need God to empower Evander Holyfield. As a good Christian to beat the evil Mike Tyson, who is an evil Muslim. We 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 are, we're creating, we're, it's like we've adopted this thing that there must be a good, there must be. A a right, there must be a wrong. So thus, I taught a couple of weeks ago at Spirit Tree Sanctuary about Talmic theology. What is that? In the Book of Genesis. What is this abyss? What is this watery thing? What is this deep, dark? Thing that that the writer of 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 Genesis says is chaos? Why does it have to be chaos? It's a potentiality. Watch this, it's a neutral potential that is vibrating. The spirit of God is hovering over the vibrating waters. What's it hovering in? It's hovering in what we place it in. Is this bad darkness? Is this potential for goodness? What is this chaos? What if the chaos takes on the vibration or the projection of what we bring to it? How about that? So in that way, Jacoby and and all my fam that's out there. Is even the binaries of male and female a separation of God? Ooh, talk to me, somebody. If God creates by speaking. Then God is the sperm and the egg in one creation. Now that's. That's crude elementary uh, kind of vernacular. But if God speaks into existence, God is the essence of almost a hermaphrodite. Uh, male and female in one able to germinate its own egg. So our maleness and our femaleness are further separating us from the allness of God. I know that's a lot to chew on, especially for any. Any androcentric uh, people that are in the house. I know that's a lot. That's a lot to chew on, but God is not male. God is not female. God is not a binary. God is the combination of what we would say male. Actually, Adam, Adam is not male. Is not female, is human. The capacity of both in one being. I I see that as as the embodiment. That's why even in our trans community, I see an embodiment. Of of a God nature, because it's almost like an agreement of getting rid of the binary. I know that's, that may push back on some patriarchal thinking, but it is the way that it is.
Pastor Fred basically shared the same thing, uh, God is source of all things, but that religious conditions are what. I guess, uh, you know, kind of inform the way you think about it. Okay. All right, nu- number two, are are people who carry out evil acts born evil? So I will say it's unanimous. I'm looking through all these and no one believes that people are born evil. I might summarize.
Wrong, everyone's wrong.
I might just summarize just a few of these. Uh, Mike Williams, I do not believe that anyone is born evil. I believe we all have. Capacity shaped by our circumstances. He said, some go through hell and become Batman, others go through hell and become a Joker.
Say what, say what? Look at Marvel teaching us the word of God. Keep going, sorry.
No, no, that's good. Uh, you know, essentially, uh, Richard, same thing, uh, I do not believe we are born evil. However, I do believe evil is a learned behavior. Um, I'm gonna save Danny's, I'm gonna come back to that. Uh, Lulu shared big and little trauma can both. Have a hand in the mental development of children, which manifests into full-blown disorders or illusions of their own hell. Like I said, we're all kind of saying the same thing here. Um, let's see. Gaia, I love this Gaia. I don't believe in evil nature. I believe there is only evil nurture.
That's really good.
Pause there and speak, oh, Fred, Fred said the same thing. We're not born evil. We learn how to hate.
So think about this. Think about. Let me, I'll be a little vulnerable here about my life. Of course, I recognize my my maleness, my white privilege. I try to. Use it as a platform to to be an ally, but I do recognize that. I am white and that means something in the American context. I I recognize in my, even my heterosexuality, I I recognize all that. But I have had to carry some things. Um, I haven't had to carry racial discrimination. But in some ways, I have been a a homeless ally in many ways. I'm always placed in context of being. Kind of the only white guy many times, so. Always like, why are you here? What are you doing here? Why is this white dude here? Now that I I've been a a Q-affirming, Q-plus affirming pastor for twenty years. I've been seen in many, in many affirming spaces as why is this hetero dude here? What you trying to do? What's his, and I get it. I I certainly get the, I get the angst that I cause. But my maleness, even my maleness, among in some womanous and feminist circles. What's this, why is this dude here? Why is he advocating for us? What's his end game? I get that all the time, and and it's just part of part of my life. Um, but in that, in those, in that privilege, I have had to navigate some difficulties. Um, so and many that I did not create for myself. Um, and there are other ministers' children. Who have been through some similar things that I've been through, who carry it very differently. If you, if you're, if you've been around me, if you were at the conference. You know that I love to laugh. I celebrate life. I am. When you meet me, you don't go, oh, Dee's going, must be going through something. Or been through something. I've been through some fires, but I don't want to smell like smoke. I just don't want to carry, I don't carry that on me. And some of that is probably to the credit of. Some love, love that was around me in some ways, but. But to to many of you guys' points, some people go through the same thing, others come out. Refined by it, empowered through it, as Oprah Winfrey says, what does not kill us makes us stronger. Other people live in it. They they can't, they just can't. Frederick Douglass says, um, where there is no struggle, there is no progress, but don't drown in the struggle. And so we we are aware of difficulty, but do we have to have a, as Eckhart Tolle would say, do we have a heavy pain body? Do you have to live in the in that experience? I think at some point, it is a choice to some degree. It doesn't, it doesn't mean get over it. It doesn't even mean get through it. It just means you are the creator of your reality. And you can either live in that pain. Or you can use the pain as something that was learned, condemn it. Bring the people to justice who caused it. Create healthy boundaries for yourself. In no way spiritually spiritually bypass it. But there is a choice that we either become a person who lives in love or lives in fear. It's a choice we make.
So what about this idea? Danny said, no, but perhaps their spirit made an agreement to play this evil role before incarnating.
Yeah, that's that's biblical. We could prove that from this, from the scriptures. Re- reference Danny. We can also find that in Hinduism. Uh, there's a sense of charitable ability and grace, our our neighbors, my, when my kids were growing up, our neighbors were Hindu. And they had a real sense of compassion for criminals, for people who did, who carried out terrible things, because they. They thought that they, they chose to come here to to create the contrast for us to learn from. If you, that that's getting into Carolyn Moss or Carolyn Miss or Moss. I need to have it read in a while. But she wrote a book called Sacred Contracts. In essence, of course, that that diminishes free will and agency to some degree, but charitably. If people come here to do a certain thing. That's Calvinistic, and I get it. It's 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 robotic and fatalistic and deterministic. But let's just say it is. If they play that role to create the contrast, then we should give thanks. Thank you for showing me what not to do in some ways. And so. That is the double portion that Elisha receives from Elijah. I learned from your power and from your weakness. I learned from your strengths and from your shortcomings. It's all part of my learning. Thanks, Danny.
All right, for number three, does self-hatred cause repression and ultimately facilitate evil? Lot of comments here. I won't get to them all.
That's the one right there.
But gonna take some time to read. We may go just a few minutes over. So uh, Shannon asked what scripture? You said you you gave a scripture a minute ago?
Uh, I'm not sure.
Okay, sorry, Shannon, give me more context. All right, Richard, self-hatred also leads to depression as well as repression. That is, it removes oneself from the conscious mind.
When you hate the self. Violence is more um. More digestible, right, Richard? Yeah, and so. When I'm really in love with myself. I begin to love others more deeply, and so violence becomes more difficult to carry out because. I don't care if it's, today I was driving in um, in Chapel Hill, and I saw a dead deer. That had been like freshly hit by a car, and I was just like. Oh, God, that's awful. This is, I don't want to look at that. Then I I I took a walk today and I walked by homeless gentleman. This, it's, it hurts. It hurts to see pain. Why does it hurt me? Because I love myself. And when I see someone or something or an animal or a human being not in a space of love. It's difficult. It, the pain is normal. When you, when you live in pain, uh, the pain of hating yourself. It's easier to commit atrocities against others because you hate yourself, right? Yeah.
Elise shared, I think self-hatred causes repression and ultimately facilitation of evil. It is then we are not being loving and inclusive. And then. Elise quoted our good friend, uh, Shannon actually just said that our. Our TFC family, the virtue, uh, the faith community. I always remember TFC, and then I can never remember what it stands for, the faith community. I get it, I get it backwards, but she quoted, Lord, prepare me to be a place of safety.
Yeah. If I'm going to be safe, a safe space for others, am I a safe space for me? Am I okay with me first? I I said, I was in an airport years ago. And spirit was just downloading some things to me. And I was just like, I can't write fast enough, but. In essence, the more comfortable we become in our skin. The less, the less uncomfortable we are with others and their skin. The more at ease I am with me, the less I am dis-eased. With others. What is, why do, why do some people need everybody to be just like them? My my lifelong best friend is a same-gender-loving. Uh, individual who has never hunted or maybe been fishing twice with me. We don't like a lot of the same. We don't like a lot of the same things, we do like some of the same things, is not a huge sports fan. Um, doesn't watch the news all that much. But. We, we celebrate each other in our uniqueness. Because in my hyper. Uber mensch. Uh, maleness. I'm comfortable in myself. And I love his expression in, in his self. I don't know if that's a word, but. Yeah, it, we, we celebrate the uniqueness of each other because we love ourselves. And I don't need him to be like me, he doesn't need me to be like him. I don't need to create everyone in my image, right? When you love yourself, when you're at ease with yourself. You are, you are not dis-eased with others in their authentic skin and selves, that's good.
Um, they were wanting a scripture about, for reincarnation, making a soul contract before coming to earth.
So that's not a scripture, that is, uh, that's Carolyn Miss or Moss.
It's Miss, uh, Melissa Kadyear said.
NYSS, it's a book called Sacred Contracts.
Oh, yes.
Um, but if you want a scripture for that. Um, uh. Before I formed you in your mother's womb, I knew you. And Carlton would say, and you knew you. Uh, Jesus taught reincarnation. Uh, or the reincarnative spirit, not necessarily transmigration, but the re- reincarnation of spirit. With John the Baptist, he equated John the Baptist with Elijah. Uh, the apostle said, when will Elijah return? Jesus said, Elijah has already returned, his name is John the Baptist, and so. I don't know exactly what scripture that is, I think that's in the, in the Gospel of John.
Alright, we're at time, hang with us for just a second. Let's see, I want to read a couple more, um. I lost my place, sorry guys, uh, Gaia shared, for the most part, yes, but it also depends on if you can navigate. This unhealthy state in a healthy manner.
Uh, speaking in the context of self-hatred?
Yes.
Yeah, how do, ooh, yeah, think about the deny the self, carry the cross. Uh, Jesus said, he who loves his life will lose it. That's problematic for me, I, I don't. I don't love my life in the way that. Uh, I love riches or, uh. People accepting me to the place where I won't speak truth to power, but I do love my life. I love my family, I love, I love people who are close to me, I. Brandy and I took a walk today, I loved. I love that. So, there, there is some necessity, Gaia, for us to be able to even say, yeah. What is this, what is this suffering thing that Jesus needs us to do? And so in that way. Jesus is not my canon of scripture. But my canon of scripture is the, is the Holy Spirit within me. Helping me even to rightly divide. The Bible, Paul. And if you guys can hear this, even helping me rightly divide Jesus in some ways, that's great, Gaia, thanks.
I, I think I've gotten everyone at least once, um, and so we'll, we'll cut it off there, but.
Look at here.
You guys are amazing, I, I wish I could give everybody a big old hug, we love you.
I, I hope you're. You, you bore with me in my folly tonight, because I think the history. That I gave to us of kind of where pain comes from and the illustrations we gave. It, and so I want everybody to hear me as we close. It doesn't justify viol- violence. There's no way to condone. Evil acts. They, they have to be condemned. But in order to heal them. We have to understand where they come from. Where, where does evil begin? Does it begin with? The rejection of the self. With a parental, uh. Dissatisfaction. I wanted my son to be this, and he became this, and so he's never gonna match up to me. Well, that, that has a powerful impact on the human psyche, does it not? And then we create from that space, some people. Go through a, a, a place of liberation. I'm liberated from parental fantasy. I don't have to live my life out satisfying my parents. Fantasies of me. I am my own person, I forgive my parents for what they did, some people never get there. They continue to live in that space of, I hate my parents, they mess me up, they, they're never proud of me. Or society, or religion, or, uh, wha- whatever that space is that, that we inhabit. And so if you have been healed, and I said at our conference this past year. Um. Only give the microphone to people who are more healed than hurting. It's, it's not a marginalization. It's architectural. We cannot architect a sustainable, um, substantive. Creative, inclusive space. If people who are still more hurting have the microphone, why? Because they will project into that microphone their own self-hatred. Or they will, they will project their overreaction to their abuse. The people who get the microphone are those who have, have gone through something. Have gone through the process of reconciling and, and healing the hurt. Doesn't mean we're all, we're ever fully healed. The scar is always there. But now I can speak from a place of health, not a place of dis-ease. Everybody feel that, so. Especially if you were at the conference this year, we really honed in on that, that. As we architect our spiritual communities. People with the microphone, doesn't mean that everybody's not welcomed. But everybody doesn't get the microphone. We need to be speaking from a place. Of at least healing or health. In order to architect inclusion together. In no way does, does that diminish our past, our pain? Spiritual bypassing in no way. But in, in the architecture. Of creating inclusion as critical mass. Taking this message into the mainstream. It does need to come from voices who are healing or i- in some ways, healthy in some ways, so.
Jacoby shared, great discussion tonight, Melissa, uh, hugs back at you, Brandy, I love that. Lulu, I look forward to this every week, lots of love from. Miss Margie, Be Woke, hugs back, gingerbread. Tonight's teaching was very profound for me, and I'm grateful for Bishop and Pastor Brandy, thank you so much, we love you all more than you know. We look forward to this every week as well. And we can't wait to get, get back home, we, we've been on the road for two, over two weeks now. We haven't slept in our own bed. We left for California, I mean, one night, um. And we're gonna show some pictures from that this Sunday, so tune in Sunday.
Of Josh Johnson.
Yes, our lovely evening meeting Josh Johnson, that was the best.
Yep, and, uh. It's, there, there's a grace even for our travel. But we, we are tired, Brandon, I've been sleeping, she thinks it's a queen size bed, which it may be. I'm big, I, I'm big, I'm all, I'm all big.
DE, you were on my side of the bed all night last night.
I can't, I can't get on the right shoulder, I can't get my pillows right, I'm sure Brandy's like, why are you shaking his bed this way? I need my bigger bed back, but. May, maybe that's part of my privileges as well, who knows, but. I'm glad to be in a space with my daughter, we love our daughter, and, um, supporting her with her medical. Medical travels, alright, uh, thank you for being a part of this tonight, we love you guys, we really, really honor the sacred space that we share. Uh, together, give something tonight to help keep this mothership. Strong and, uh, and sustainable. We are, we are trying as, look, think about what we've done, we have, we have created space in now Liverpool. And Louis Melancia in, uh, Brazil. In Cleveland, Tennessee, Reverend, uh, uh, Reverend Azariah Terrell and his wife Shantrice. Starting a space in Dallas, Texas. Look at, look at what's happening, and so. All of these spaces are not necessarily, uh, monolithic or uniform to us. But they connect to us in some ways as a mothership, as a model. Of inclusivity, and that is a legacy. That Carlton Pearson leaves for us, and so, thank you for being supportive, both with your time. With your talent, with your consciousness, with your intelligence, and with your treasure, thanks for. Supporting what we do, alright, let's grab, uh, our affirmation at the end together. I'm open to seeing a different perspective of God and of scripture. I have been reconciled to God, now I will make peace with God in my mind. Jesus, Jesus did not come to save me from God. But to save me from myself. To deliver me from religion. And to reconnect me to God in consciousness, especially coming up on Easter, very powerful. I will consider the idea that Christ's work of life is greater. Not equal to, not less than, greater than Adam's work of death. The good news is that the bad news was wrong. If all men died in Adam. All men will and are already living in Christ. The world is saved, whether they know it or not, as a minister of reconciliation, my job is not to save anyone. But to spread the, uh, the good news that salvation is a finished work. Amen, somebody, we love you guys, what an amazing discussion tonight, thank you for dealing, uh, what's my background tonight, Brandon?
It looks good, we have the.
Is it, what is it?
No, look here.
Is it the fully awake thing?
No, it's not, it, it's, we have the.
Oh, yeah.
Gratitude.
So my background is just basically a blank wall.
Yeah, we, we made the best, we made the best that we could.
Make it work.
Of this situation.
Do, 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 get what you want and get plenty.
If you could really see what it looks like, it's kind of special in here.
We're in a small kitchen with, with a dim lighting, which I. You should see the lights that Brandy has on this tail right now, it is, looks like a praying mantis trying to eat me.
It's working.
We love you guys, we'll see you Friday morning, uh, morning devotion at seven AM Eastern Standard Time, and then. This Sunday is Palm Sunday, yay, the tr- the triumphal entry of Jesus into Jerusalem. And your triumphal entry of accepting your own innate divinity. Go in peace, we love you guys.